Indication by Ms. DuPla to Planas, District 11, and Planes of Legion from our Archer District 13.
Lord eternal God, as we begin our meeting, we do so with the awareness that without your divine assistance, our work will be empty. We ask that you protect our school system and may our teachers and staff bring the love and presence of Jesus to our students as they do to us. Grace us with your wisdom and vision. Gift us with your holy humor and humility, so that not only this meeting, but all our lives may be a meeting place for your kingdom. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party's fans. One nation in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dee Rotaro.
Ms. Babin.
Yeah.
Ms. Hellston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Ms. Petita.
Here.
Dr. Broach.
Here.
Dr. Guyot.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dupren.
Here.
Mr. Schwess.
Here.
Mr. Plaisance.
Here.
Mr. deBlass.
Here.
Mr. Justler. Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
And Mr. Troy Dupren.
Here.
And Ms. Thomas, they're both here. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. E to recognize St. Charles Elementary School as a 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. Ms. Andre Delcum.
On behalf of the St. Charles Wildcat family, I thank you. I thank you for recognizing our achievements and celebrating our successes and notifying, noticing that we do or committed to being excellent. And that's not by accident. That's what the staff and the students and the parents do each and every day to move forward, to continue to grow. So I do have some members here that I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I have some of my faculty members and some of their family members and my family members, because if we weren't supported altogether, we would never make any progress. Thank y'all for recognizing. It means a lot to me that y'all recognize that we are committed.
You know, they say it takes a village to raise a child, our family, and I know from start to finish, where y'all start at school, with family, with friends, with fun, with academics, with standards, with education, y'all truly are a family at St. Charles Elementary, so congratulations. Two, approval of board consent agenda. Eight, approval of board consent agenda items. D, minutes of special board meeting held September 4, 2019. C, minutes of regular board meeting held September 4, 2019. D, minutes of board member retreat held September 12, 2019. E, minutes of policy and procedure committee meeting held September 16, 2019. F, minutes of academic committee meeting held September 16, 2019. G, minutes of transportation committee meeting held September 17, 2019. H, minutes of landing facilities management committee meeting held September 17, 2019. I, minutes of insurance committee meeting held September 18, 2019. J, superintendent's quality report for the period of July through September of 2019. And K, observance proclaimed by LaFouche Parish School Board. LaFouche Parish Bus Safety, School Bus Operator, and School Bus Monitor Appreciation Week for October 21st through 25th of 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Tina Babin, second by Mr. Joey DuPla. Is there any discussion, Mr. Dupren?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to also add National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day, which is actually today, October 2nd, and National Principals Month, October 1st through October 31st, to that list. I think both of these are essential members of our school district, and we couldn't be as successful as we are without them.
Thank you. So you're wanting to amend K to include bus driver.
National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day and National Principals Month.
Okay. Do I have a motion to amend? Motion by Mr. Troy Dupren, second by Mr. Randy Schwess. All in favor? We'll do a hand vote for that. All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. We'll make the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Now, do I have a motion for approval of the board consent agenda items?
As amended.
As amended? We had a mo- do I have a motion? We had a first and a second, frankly. We had a first and a second. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Let's vote. The vote is unanimous. Three, approval of policy and procedure committee recommendations as per meeting held September 16, 2019. Mr. Ray Bernard.
Yes, Madam President, I'll just give one sentence to explain each of the policies. So everyone will see what we're dealing with, and then I'll ask for motion. The first policy is Policy IDPFA, which involves the setting up of a Special Education Advisory Council. It states the members and the composition of the council, and that the members of this council will be three times a year, and then we put their lines to the superintendent at the end of the year. I move that this be accepted.
Thank you, Mr. So move by Mr. Bernard. Do I have a second? Ms. Mary Petita, second. Is there any board discussion? Any public discussion? Let's vote. Excuse me, Mr. Guyot.
But then we want to do all of them, or?
Correct. I thought Mr. Bernard was finished. I'm sorry.
No, what I'd like to do is just explain each one, then we can vote on all of them. Okay? Does that be all right?
That would be fine.
All right, the next one is File IDPFB, which is simply a change in the numbers, and that directs the policy dealing with service animals in the school and the guidelines that control them. The next one is Immunization, which simply sets the immunization schedules under the umbrella of the Department of Health and Human Health and Hospitals. The fourth one is File KG, the Use of School Facilities. It adds the cost of turf heels for the practice at $300 and for the games at $1,500. And also the added sentence that the school board by majority vote, R, the superintendent can waive these fees based on whatever extenuating circumstances might come up. And the last one is File KAM, Visitors to the School. Which simply involves all visitors have to sign in and have a US-issued personal ID card to be scanned in with the visitor's pass. If they don't have that, then they will have an escort to visit whatever classes or whatever business they have to do with the schools. I move that all of these policies be accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, and I apologize for the- I brought the motion. So we all have a first and a second. You motion by Mr. Bernard first, second by Mr. Dr. Guyot. Is there any discussion among the board? Mr. Dupren?
Only on the use of the school facilities is not waived. It's amended fees, which could also be waived.
Wait, wait.
But it's amended.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Any other discussion? Any further discussion from the audience? If not, let's vote. Motion passes unanimously. Four, approval of Academics Committee Recommendations as per meeting held September 16, 2019. Ms. Tina Babin.
A, to approve the body of strategic planning. And while I'm here, I'd like to go ahead and take a second also to thank everyone on the team, the supervisor staff, all the department leaders, and everyone following in for this. It was a work in progress, and we're very pleased with the progress that, with the production that they came up with. And so I'd like to go ahead and put that out there, and so move.
Motion by Ms. Tina Babin, second by Mr. Tyler Dupren. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Petita.
I just want to echo what you said. This is a very, very strategic plan. It really addresses all areas and very- now, now the work begins, because now we have to start putting it into action. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bernard.
And I'd also like to thank Mr. Morton for taking our input and taking it seriously and implementing it into the plan. We appreciate that. Why, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Ms. Um...
Boujwa.
Ms. Boujwa. I'm seeing the wrong name.
I just want to echo what Mr. Bernard said. I want to thank the team for adding our input and taking it to heart and adding it to the strategic plan. And I know it's a living document and can be amended and changed, but it's a good start. Great plan.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Ms. Thomas.
I would like to thank Mr. Morton for listening to me and putting transportation in there with a plan. So now we do have a plan that I am very pleased with, very, very pleased with. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any further discussion among the board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Five, approval of Landing Facilities Management Committee Recommendations as per meeting held September 17, 2019. Mr. Randy Schwess.
Thank you, Madam President. To approve the only responsive and responsible bidder, LA Contracting Enterprise for tree trimming services throughout the district on a as-needed basis for a one-year term. So move.
Motion by Mr. Schwess, second by Mr. Barry Plaisance. Is there any board discussion? Yes, Ms. Plaisance.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say thank you to LA Contracting for actually submitting in a bid and being responsive to our need. I think there's going to be a great need for this service throughout our district from one end to the other. I think this service has not been done in quite a while. It's been several, several years. So obviously, at some point, we'll, they'll be needed. So thank them again for turning in a bid.
Thank you, Mr. Plaisance. Any further discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Six, approval of Insurance Committee Recommendations as per meeting held September 18, 2019. Mr. Barry Plaisance.
A, to consider renewing with York Risk Services Group to provide third-party administrative services for the self-funded general auto and workers' compensation life insurance. So move.
Motion by Mr. Barry Plaisance, second by Ms. Mary Petita. Is there any discussion? Any public participation or discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Seven, new business. Eight, to receive report on the 2019-2020 enrollment figures for all LaFouche schools. Mr. Frank Poswell.
Madam President, Acting Superintendent Morton and Melinda DeBoard, you should have a copy of the report in your folders. The Minimum Foundation Program Formula, that is adopted by the Louisiana Board of Elementary and Education, Secondary Education, and approved by the legislature, determines the cost of a minimum foundation program of education in all public elementary and secondary schools, and helps to allocate the funds equitably to school districts. The Minimum Foundation Formula, MFP, is the largest source of revenue for the LaFouche Parish School Board and its general fund. After all required mandates or mandates, LaFouche Parish School Board has the flexibility to spend the funding to meet the needs of its schools and students. Because the MFP is directly tied to student enrollment, LaFouche Parish School Board faces a challenge when there is a decline in the district's student population. The Louisiana Department of Education obtains student enrollment comps twice during each fiscal year. The initial count of the student enrollment is submitted October 1st, and the second count is submitted February 1st. Any fluctuation in the enrollment count from October 1st to February 1st requires a mid-year adjustment reflecting either an increase or decrease of MFP funding as determined by the changes in enrollment. The second count on February 1st is the count used to implement the MFP formula for the following fiscal year. You might say that is the money count. Of course, October 1st count is also important. Senate concurrent resolution, it's always a concurrent resolution, either by the House or the Senate, to approve the MFP formula in the legislature. So this past year, the most recent legislative session, SCR 3, which passed in the recent 2019 regular session of the legislature, not only provided an across-the-board pay increase of $1,000 for classroom teachers and other certificated personnel, and then across-the-board pay increase of $500 for non-certificated school personnel, but also increased the base for pupil amount in the MFP formula from $3,961 to $4,015, which is $54 per student, and an increase of 1.375 percent. So that's good. On the back of the report, the local student, total and MFP student enrollment, from October of 2014 to the present, I went back five years. And remember, your February count, which is in dog print, and your MFP count, that's the most important count. October 1st, 2019 student enrollment count. So let's look at the count, what we do in current. The initial October 1st, 2019 MFP student enrollment count is 14,145 students. This is an increase of 289 students over the October 1st, 2018 MFP student enrollment count, which was 13,856. So that's good. Pre-K is not funded through the MFP formula. We get grant funding for them. Pre-K student enrollment is for October 1st, 2019, is 127 students. And there are other preschool children and infants, there were 11 of them, funded through federal funding and other sources, and not through the MFP. Our total student enrollment for October 1st, 2019 is 14,796, which is an increase of 264 students from last year's October 1st, 2018 total student enrollment, which was 14,532 students last year. Please note, this is important, that the October 1st, 2019 student enrollment counts are not official yet. The one, you know, we add the October 1st count, it's not official at this time. They won't be official until October 18th, when student information system data is due to be cleaned up for any evidence. The Louisiana State Department of Education will be mandating a second student enrollment count come February 1st, 2020, in which school districts must make mid-year adjustments. That official MFP count, student count, will be used in the MFP for fiscal year 2021. The February student enrollment report will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poswell. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Poswell? Ms. Petita.
Do you, Frank, do you know where, is it any particular part of the parish that gained enrollment? Or is it in, you know, is it across the parish or specific schools or?
I have that information available. I could get that to you.
I appreciate that.
I could dig it out. You have to dig it out. I got it. I got it right here.
Any other question for Mr. Poswell? Yes, Ms. Dupren?
I just want to say, thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you for a very thorough report. And I know that we are all very appreciative of the increase in the MFP formula, that we can better spend to educate our students.
Thank you.
Anything further from the public or the board? If not, we'll move on to B. Thank you, Mr. Poswell. To consider waiving the use of facilities fee associated with the gym usage for the Biddy Basketball Association, local leagues. Have a motion? Motion by Mr. Troy Dupren, second by Dr. Mary Bro. Is there any board discussion? No, excuse me, I've got to ask for a board discussion. Mr. Damian Foles, we do have a blue card he filled out from... I'm sorry. We got to waiving the use of facilities fee associated with gym usage for Biddy Basketball Association for local leagues. Mr. Kevin Claymore. If you could state your address, Mr. Claymore.
Kevin Claymore, 205 St. Michael Street, City of Tibbetts. I appreciate you guys affording me this opportunity to talk in front of you. I am the president for Tibbetts Biddy Basketball. I am also the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Tibbetts. We've been involved with, personally, I've been involved with Biddy for over 30 years, gone on 30 years. We've always used the LaFouche Parish schools, the South of CN Washington, East West, and Tibbetts High, as well as the Parochial Schools. And we've always paid the custodial fees, as well as all charges incurred at that, the workman's comp, the benefits, and everything like that. We've always had the use of facilities fees waived by the superintendent or the school board. I wasn't sure who until a couple of weeks ago. This year, I know there are some issues going on, and I don't really need to get involved in that. I'm here to ask that you can waive, if you can waive those fees. It's important to understand, we service over 450 kids on a given year. Most of those kids are your students. We service the City of Tibbetts in all outstanding areas. Raceman has a Biddy program. Lockport has a Biddy program. LaRose has a Biddy program. Galliano has a Biddy program. And I think, with the exception of Raceman, they all use the LaFouche Parish gyms also. So I'd appreciate it if you give this serious thought. I can answer any questions. I might date my age a little bit, but I can remember when that form, the use of facilities form, had an exception for Biddy Basketball to have those fees waived. It's been taken out in years past, and I certainly understand why. So I'm here to answer any questions or concerns if you guys have concerning this.
Thank you, Mr. Claymore.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from the audience? Any discussion in the board?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Petita.
Does that include practice? Because I did get a phone call from a Biddy team that asked if the fees were going to be waived for their practices.
Yes.
Okay, good. That's right. Thank you.
Mr. Plaisance.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, to make sure, they're also going to be included Lockport, LaRose, Galliano. So everyone's going to be included underneath that.
Yes.
Yes. I mean, this is a great organization. I think most of us probably, at some point, probably, possibly have played Biddy Basketball. And like you say, Mr. Claymore, there's a lot of our children that do play, so all for it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Plaisance. Any other discussion? Ms. Thomas.
At one time, if I am remembering correctly, didn't they, they used to play at the Civic Center? Would ha- because that's owned by the city. So you shouldn't have to pay any fees there.
So we play, we play everywhere. I play, I, I, I play everywhere. We do play at the Civic Center. We run two courts in there, and I do pay a fee of $500, but I do not pay custodial fees. Last year, the LaFouche Parish, we paid a total of $9,205 just in custodial fees. And that includes a lot, you know. The years past, it hovers around $8,500 to $9,000 that I paid the LaFouche Parish School Board for custodial fees, not for use of facility fees. But I do pay the city a minimum amount to use their facilities.
So would the custodians get paid that has to be at the game, at the school?
At the City of Tibbetts?
No. If we, for the schools.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm not asking to waive those fees.
So, okay, so you're just asking to waive the use of facility fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think it's been tailored over the years by the LaFouche Parish School Board, which is a tremendous, tremendously easy to work with, I might add, the, the, each school and the finance department over here. But we pay for, it's almost like you guys, the LaFouche Parish School Board, does not, do not pay anything extra for those custodians to run after us.
Anything further, Ms. Thomas?
Well, I, I don't know. I'm kind of scratching my head on this, because we just came before this board before. And my son was a Biddy Basketball player, so I'm just, and I've had my grandson in a lot of programs with the Recreation Department, but I feel if they could pay the Civic Center something, the school should be making something off of it. I, I can maybe go for a reduced fee if there's a lot. We can discuss that. But if you're going to pay, you're a city entity, and you have to pay the city to use a city facility, why can't you pay the school to use this?
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Maybe not the whole thing, but something. That's my opinion.
Ms. Petita.
Well, to answer that, they do not pay the custodial fees at the, at the Civic Center. So it's kind of a wash, really, because they're paying $500, but they're not paying for their custodians.
Because their custodians work for the city.
I know, but they still work the overtime when these people are playing. The other thing is that they service our students, and that's the thing that we need to remember, is that, you know, that they service our students. And they don't collect that much in fees to be able to pay custodial fees, which is over $1,000 plus a fee to use the gym. So I just think it's, it's something that we, our students deserve, and especially with all the different places. And I want to just ask that the school be notified, if this passes, that the school be notified that the fees were, were waived.
Thank you, Ms. Petita. Any further discussion? Ms. Babin?
I just feel like I need to ask this question if you're more comfortable about it. I'm assuming all the insurance and all that's taking care of, we have certificates and all that already in place for this orientation.
Yes, sir.
So, yes, ma'am. So before an institution is allowed to use the facility, those are the first things that we vet and check. So as he's been doing for years, the insurance, the requirements, and the custodial fees, those are all going to be cleared before any fee would be waived. So we're not waiving insurance requirements or the indemnification of the school board to use the facility. The only thing we'll be waiving are additional fees on top of custodial fees and the insurance requirements and the indemnification forms.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Babin. Anyone else from the board? Any further public participation or discussion? Any further public participation or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Claymore, for coming and answering the questions. We have a first and a second, so we'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Kevin, and thank you. C to con...
That was Evan's chair for a moment.
C to consider amendment in the use of facilities fee for the field turf for Salafoush High School to seven hundred and fifty dollars per day with regard to the Bayou Flag Football League. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Troy Dupren, second by Mr. Ray Bernard. We do have a blue card on this one. Mr. Damon Fosse, two forty-two Providence Avenue, cut off Louisiana, seven oh three four five. Thank you, Mr. Fosse.
All right, I brought a piece of paper so I don't move my hands as much as I can. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for considering this amendment. Bayou Flag Football started about ten years ago with, uh, twelve kids, uh, playing, making teams in Salafoush area, played in the Tivito League. Now we're up to about two hundred and sixty kids. Um, we're just finding it kind of hard to find a, a nice field to play on that doesn't have potholes. So last year, we started, uh, using the Salafoush Field with the field turf. Um, last year, we were able to pay Salafoush of about four, a little over four thousand dollars to use the field six times, um, which is higher than the fee was, but, you know, we gave them the money. And, uh, besides that, we also allow the clubs at the school, the smaller clubs, like, uh, soccer, Orlando TC, those clubs, to run concessions and keep a hundred percent of the money. Uh, we also employ some of the high school students to referee games. So, uh, I kind of feel like it's a win-win situation for the whole, uh, the whole area. Uh, we, being we're a smaller, uh, organization, we kind of found that fifteen hundred per day was a little high. Uh, it would cost us nine thousand dollars to use it six times. Uh, so we were asking if you could reduce that to be now about seven hundred and fifty, about half. And, uh, we can certainly, you know, afford to, to spend forty-five hundred dollars to give the board and, uh, just kind of help, uh, you know, to maintain the field and replace it in ten years from now. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Fosse. Appreciate you coming. Is there any further discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? Mr. Bernard?
Um, yes, I, I, I'm, I'm really impressed with this particular program, especially with the fact that they donate close to five thousand dollars back to the school and the fact that they do use high school kids as referees, as Salafoush, uh, clubs for concessions and things of that nature. And initially, when they actually did this particular program, they based it, uh, on what was in the written policy, which at that particular time was two hundred dollars, in which whatever reason, we didn't have the opportunity to change. Uh, so I, I, I know that he submitted all the proper paperwork, but based on the present policy and, uh, I, I would hope that we would, uh, consider amending this to seven hundred and fifty dollars based on, on what he compared this, not only to, uh, the community, but also back to Salafoush High School.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Any other discussion? Mr. Dupren?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Damian Fosse and Mr. Kevin Claymore for giving up their time to help give back to the community. Because I have to admit, I'm a research guy. And research shows there is a direct correlation between students being involved in extracurricular activities and their success in schools. So we thank you for not only helping those students strive and succeed in school, but also helping them, uh, follow their dreams and hopefully go on to participate as far as in their college careers, high school careers, whatever it may be. So thank you both very much for giving back that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupren. Anything further? Motion passes unanimously. D to approve the revisions to the business manager job description as presented by Mr. Martin, Acting Superintendent. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Ms. Tina Babbin. Mr. Um, Martin?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Two changes. Uh, the word "backlord" is going to be changed to "bachelor's degree" just for easier reading for any particular candidate. And the master's degree in public or business administration will be dropped from the requirements and the words "preferred" will be added to the certified public accountant requirements. This will allow us to open the field of candidates to continue to pursue a replacement for the current business manager who's going to retire.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there any discussion from the public? Any board discussion? Ms. Boujwa?
I'm glad to see this change, Mr. Martin, because I, as I've said before, I truly think that it's somebody who is knowledgeable in public. Financial accounting is way more important than if they have a CPA because there's probably eighty to ninety percent of CPAs that don't flow with educational funding. So I, I really like this change.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Mr. Claymore?
Thank you, Madam President. I think changes are fine. And, uh, the man's retirement is getting really close, so I know it's, it's pressured. It's getting tight. It's been a month. Good luck. Mr. Martin will, will honor. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Claymore. Ms. Cortita?
One other thing too, is that we have advertised and advertised and even advertised bigger and have not been able to draw anybody to fill the position. So I think we have to do something as a board, so I'm, I'm favorable.
Thank you, Ms. Cortita. Mr. Bernard?
Uh, this will open it up as well to the, uh, in-staffed people that are presently working with, under our responsibility.
It would open up, Mr. Bernard, to anybody who meets these qualifications. Yes, sir.
Mr. DePlante?
I wait until I ask for a reason. On the light of note, is there any applicants in the audience tonight?
Thank you. Thank you.
I gotta talk.
I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion, any other comments? Ms. Boujwa?
Did you say Don was leaving at the end of the month?
Yes, ma'am.
So we want to truly thank you for all your service. This will be your last board meeting, so thank you.
I'll have one more meeting.
And no meeting, okay.
Don, do you have anything to say?
Oh, no. We didn't even take up meeting time for that.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard.
Yeah, I do have one question. Uh, will this be a change in policy or, or strictly up your decision?
Yes or no, if we're not changing just the, just the job description?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion passes unanimously. E to consider membership in the Louisiana School Board Association. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Cortita, second by Mr. Troy Dupren. Is there any discussion? Mr. Ray Bernard?
Okay, I, I, I sent this in, uh, for, um, consideration by membership and I'll, I'll just read over the rationale, but then I, I'd like to expand on that a little bit more so everybody understands why I think, and why we all should get involved at the Louisiana School Board Association. It will provide our board with relevant valid useful information along with the opportunity for professional development, which is six hours of required training and instruction mandated in school state policy, BBBC, as well as, uh, routine communication on legislative updates and miscellaneous school-related topics. It will also give our board the opportunity to judge the others, or to join the other sixty-eight school boards who are active members of this organization. At this time, we are the only one in the state of Louisiana that is not a member of the Louisiana School Board Association. This particular agenda item is not for anything other than membership. Conference and, and travel and things of that nature will still be left up to the individual board member. And let me also say this, a large portion of this membership fee will be subsidized, is my understanding, by board docs. And in addition to that, uh, our own legal advisor suggests, strongly suggests that we join the organization and most importantly, we are presently in violation of our own policy, which is policy BGA, which I'd like to read for us all at this particular point. It says, "The LaFouche Parish School Board shall," not may, "shall," "maintain membership in the Louisiana School Boards Association and National School Boards Association. Authorization to include the required organization dues and cost of registration and travel to the meetings of the state and national association is in the annual budget and shall be considered automatic from year to year." I'm not asking for that particular portion concerning conferences, but I am asking the approval of membership back into this whole organization.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Any other discussion?
Well, I think, but it says NSBA also. I mean, we're just considering right now LSA. But I want to be sure that, that the audience understands that we cannot join the association as individual members. We tried that, um, after we, we made the budget cuts. We tried joining individually, but it's not the individuals that join, it's the board that joins. And so that's why we have to, you know, we have to do it as a board and not as an individual. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Ms. Cortita. Any further discussion? Mr. Claymore?
I mean, of course, costs. Mr. Costs associated with joining school boards, I mean.
I guess we didn't get us those numbers, Mr. Martin, or you have them?
Yeah, I think it hasn't changed from the presentation, uh, but so the, the costs associated with the twelve thousand dollars, however, much of that is offset by two things. Board docs gives a substantial discount. And we just received a bill last week that said that we're going to be charged a full twenty thousand dollars for our board docs if we are not members of the association by the closing of that year. Um, because that's in their bylaws. That, that's how, that's how they charge. The other cost associated with not being a member has to do with attorney fees. So that the association allows the board members and the supervisor staff to contact the Louisiana School Boards Association for policy-related questions and not incur attorney costs because it's part of being a member of the association. So, uh, that bill is offset by those two things immediately. Not to mention the added benefit of, like you mentioned, the professional development and the collaboration with other board members. So, from a financial standpoint, Mr. Claymore, uh, that, that, those are the two ways that the membership also offset.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Claymore. Any other further, any further discussion? If not, let's vote. Anybody from the public? I said further discussion, I'm sorry. Any... Ms. Julie Bro, if you could come up and state your address. I said your name.
My name is Julie Bro. I live at one sixty St. James Street in Kansas. Is LSA a good organization? Yes, it is. Is it very informative? Yes, it is. I think it's tough right now with finances in the public's eye to see that the board or the district is going to pay for this. Not that it's important and not that it's informative. Do we receive a discount? Yes, we do, and I totally understand that through board docs. And I know Ms. Glenn will be very happy if this passes because of board docs. But I think in the public's perception and in the public's eye, it's going to be a tough pill to swallow. So, Don, I'm asking you, for the public and constituents of LaFouche, to please, some kind of way, make them understand what is the savings and what does it cost, and if it's going to cost the board anything beyond what the savings are. If that is possible, just to make them understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bro. Any further comments from the public? Any further comments from the board? Motion passes unanimously. A memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Joyce Yusei, retired hired professional. Mr. Joey DePlantes?
Ms. Joyce Yusei was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on November twenty-first, nineteen seventy-four, as a bus driver. On October seventh, nineteen ninety-one, Ms. Yusei accepted a position as school janitor at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Then on September twenty-first, nineteen ninety-two, Ms. Yusei transferred to the position of paraprofessional at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Ms. Yusei retired on December thirty-first, two thousand and one, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of twenty-seven years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on a special page of our mini-book.
Thank you, Ms. DePlantes. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and were recorded on a special page of our mini-book. Nine tentative dates of future meetings. A transportation committee meeting, Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. B, Lennin's Facilities Management Committee, Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Insurance Committee, Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. D, Finance Committee Meeting, Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. E, Policy and Procedure Committee Meeting, Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. F, Academics Committee, Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. G, Advisory Committee Meeting, Monday, November fourth, two thousand and nineteen. And H, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen. E, Policy and Procedure Committee Meeting and F, Academics Committee Meeting were moved from Monday to Thursday based on, um, fall break and, uh, staff and teachers being off. So it was moved to the Thursday. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Mr. Randy Schwex. With a motion? Oh, that's the minutes. Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Ten adjournments, eight introducing the new administrator. Mr. Martin?
So we have a new administrator. Not new administrator to the LaFouche Parish Schools, but the new principal, the career magnet center, here tonight with his beautiful family, so if Mr. Walker would like to stand up and introduce him.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, supervisory staff and the board. Uh, it's a great honor to stand here tonight. Uh, it, it's been a wonderful week. Uh, it's been a wonderful two months. Being at the Career Magnet Center, it's an amazing place. Uh, I have an awesome staff. Some are here today, tonight. Uh, it's an amazing place. I have some big shoes to fill, uh, with Mr. Long's retirement. Uh, but I focus with the faculty that I'm here to grow with them, to support them, so we can continue to go to Career Magnet Center to give LaFouche Parish students the best available. Uh, I thank you guys for this opportunity. I look forward. I'm excited. Uh, I can't thank enough my family for supporting my endeavors and being here, uh, tonight with me.
Dupren?
I do have one thing to say to you, Mr. Walker. I was threatened by some of the teachers and staff there that if we take you away, that it wasn't going to be good on me.
And what a great month to, uh, become a principal, National Principal Month. So, great job on that.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Mr. Bernard?
I had an opportunity to work with his mother, Catherine, uh, many, many years. So I know you're proud of your son, and rightfully so. Catherine, nice to see you again and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further? Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the board members as well as the audience and everyone else to include the Boujwa family in their prayers. They were involved in a serious accident several weeks ago this month, last month. And it's real hard for them right now, so I ask that we all include them in our prayers, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. They did have children in our system and, um, very terrible. Thank you for that reminder. Ms. Boujwa?
Before you be adjourned, I'd like to congratulate our fellow board member, Nichols State. He can tell you more about it. He was awarded a fellowship, and I don't remember if it's from Nichols or who it was by. But he made us proud this week.
Mr. Guy?
So if I may, thank you. So, because a lot of you know I'm also a respiratory therapist, and I've been that for nearly thirty years now. And so I'm deeply honored to be recognized by the American Association for Respiratory Care as a selected fellow this year in nineteen. Uh, they're going to bestow that honor on me in November at the national conference, which will be in your audience, so my kids will be...
Oh, that's great.
Congratulations. Anybody have any comments? Congratulations. We do have one announcement. Mr. Joey DePlantis brought this our attention. Lafouche Parish District Attorney Christine Russell is announcing that she's sponsoring a one-hour state mandated aesthetics training for all Lafouche Parish public officials, public employees, and state and parish school board members and commission members. The training is being held at two PM on October fifteenth at the Warren Harangue Municipal Auditorium, which is at three-ten North Canal Boulevard here in Thibodaux. She welcomes all the public to attend, and for more information, you can call her office. Thank you, Mr. DePlantis, I appreciate that information. Any further discussion before we adjourn? Ms., Dr. Bro?
Do we have recent birthdays? It was Ms. Olson's birthday.
Oh. Are we ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bro.
Happy birthday to you.
What's the name? Dennis Allwain in the kitchen. For those of you who know me, I work in another school system, so I'm working on a one-child cleanup, so that's where my mom is at right now. Is that, and thank you very much, Dr. Bro and the, and the board. Is there anything further? If not, we are adjourned.